Six thirty-one, on Monday, February twenty-second, and we will call the school committee meeting to order. First, we have our approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes. The first one from December twenty-first, two thousand fifteen.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of December twenty-first, two thousand fifteen.
Any... Is there any comment, edits, questions? You're going to abstain? Alright. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstain? We have one to abstain. Thank you. Minutes from December twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions, edits, comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That was everybody? Any... The last set is February, minutes from February first, two thousand sixteen. Is there a motion to approve, please? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Questions, edits, comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have our visitors' comments. I don't know, but I assume we have some visitors. So I will read our performance section. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session, or you can do it now. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. And this is part of our school committee policy. Are there any visitors who would like to speak at this time? Oh, I thought we had some visitors who want to speak. Okay.
A little shy.
Alright. So let me just remind you that this is basically, if you are here to speak on any matter, this is the only section that we have in our, in our meeting. So, just asking one more time if there's anyone, because I see some faces that I don't recognize. Okay? Alright. Oh, go ahead. You're good? Yes, you are. Yes. Okay. Alright, so next, we have our reports and recommendations from our secretary of attendance.
Did you want to reorder the agenda instead of the chairman?
We could. What is the suggestion? Take new business up?
To talk about the...
Oh, yes, yes. Alright, so that, we're gonna move new business up a little bit on our agenda. So we'll start with water issues at Granby Junior Senior High School and East Meadow School.
Just, I know that school committee, you're all aware, but on February fourth, I received a phone call from the Department of Environmental Protection stating that we were over acceptable levels for lead and copper within the system. They found it in five of twenty test sites that had been done. They also cited some other things that we needed to kind of take a look at. It was the first I had heard of these issues. They were based on an October one set of readings. I had not been aware of it prior to February fourth. So upon their, my discussion with them on February fourth, we immediately took out of service any drinking fountains that had been affected, as well as a sink over at East Meadow School. The high school kitchen sink was okay to stay open for the DEP as long as it was flushed every morning. Since then, we have embarked on a various both flushing and sampling and testing program that the DEP has mandated that we do. So we are taking weekly samples. We are doing tests, and John Sullivan, who is already putting in more hours than I care to think about right now, has been instrumental in particularly getting our pH readings up to acceptable levels, which this past week's readings were. So that's a helpful thing in terms of trying to stabilize the system. There was a notification that had to go out to the community, which we complied with the deadlines for doing so. And in your packet of information that you received electronically, there's a certification form that I had to file with them by last Friday, documenting everything that we had done in terms of letting people know what the levels were, doing some education via documentation. I submitted in evidence to them as well, both emails and copies of screenshots of our website and all of that kind of stuff, so that they could see that in fact we had complied. Obviously, we take this issue very seriously. We're trying to diagnose the problem at this point. I had a good conversation with the DEP on Friday, and talked about the fact that one of the things that I believe happened today was a plumbing survey.
Plumbing survey, yes.
Right. So a member of the DEP was here, the field rep from DEP was here, along with one of the supervisors from Whitewater, who was our water operator vendor, taking a look at the various plumbing issues to see if we can isolate where the problem might be. They also want to do a test, and we have not been able to before today, I guess, be able to really get a raw water sample out of the well. Whitewater has installed a faucet so that we can get a pretreated sample. Every three years or so, you're supposed to test for salts, and another year before that happens. The DEP suggested that we do it now, just as a diagnostic measure, to see if there's road salt from Route 202 or whatever that could be potentially getting in there, and that's something that we might need to take a look at. The indications are that it's not necessarily something that's happening at the source, but we're not sure. So we're doing these diagnostic measures, taking a look at plumbing, taking a look at the well itself, and testing for salts and other things that could potentially be corrosive. So we are indeed working very hard to try and isolate, or at least find out what the factors are that are causing the problem, and trying to remediate them as quickly as possible.
So just to clarify something, we're not sure whether this is something that we see at the source when you say that. Are you referring to lead and copper, or are you referring to salt?
No, referring to salt, which would be, which would be...
Just wanted to clarify that. Yep.
Thank you. Which would be, could act as a corrosive, based on the age of the pipes and the solder that's within the buildings. So whether or not there's some sort of corrosive in the water, that again, that could be treated in ways that would lower salt levels if that's in case of the fact. There is not lead at the source. If there was, everything would be impacted. The fact that it's only in certain fixtures tells us that it's probably something within the plumbing, but there's something that's causing that, and so we need to get to the root cause. So it's just, let's take a look at the whole system, let's see what's going on, and then let's do some diagnostics, and then figure out what both the short and the long-term solutions are from there.
Can you speak to some other options or other potential remedies that we're looking into?
Well, I think, you know, I know the question has been asked about the proposed elementary school building. Obviously, the new building will not have any lead in pipes, because it's illegal to do so. And in the renovation of the East Meadow School, that building will be gutted, and lead-free pipes will be installed. So that would take care of that problem at that building. And one of the troublesome sinks, which has been shut down, is pretty much the end of the line at East Meadow, so it's hard to get water through the system. This is part of the problem, is that you have... I was actually surprised at how good the pH readings were this past week, because we didn't have much water going through the system, because we didn't have students in the building, students and staff in the building. So the pH levels, despite that, were pretty, were in a pretty good place. So, you know, it's a case of just kind of getting things flushing. Chartwell, who is our food service provider, has decided that we are under an order to flush the sink at the high school. They're flushing all three kitchens, just as a precautionary measure, just to make sure that things are moving. So whenever the first person gets to work in the morning, cold water's on for fifteen to twenty minutes and just letting it run, so that way, we're getting things flushed and moved through the system. That's part of the problem. Water sits, and it stagnates. It's more likely to cause this problem than water that moves. So we're working very closely with the DEP, working very closely with Whitewater to really just get to the bottom of the problem. We should have another set of test results tomorrow, so we'll know what we're looking at in terms of where the levels are.
So when we first got the results, there were five sources that showed higher than action level copper and lead, right?
Actually, only one of them was copper. The other, all five had lead issues, but only one had copper.
Okay, okay. Well, that's good to clarify as well. Then we, last week, did the test again, and shared with the DEP. I think at that time, there were three that remained at or above the action level. One of them, I think, was at the action level. The other two were still a little higher, or higher than the action level. So do we expect that those may come down as well, since, you know, two of the five seem to have responded to something that we're doing? Are we monitoring those, and are we gonna do any testing anytime soon? When is our next testing?
It's weekly. It's a weekly test of seven sites. The DEP has mandated seven sites that we test, and it was three of those sites that were at the, right at the level. It has to be fifteen parts per billion of lead. And it was either fifteen or a little bit, or higher than that. But they are sites that have been, you know, shut down, turned off, or whatever. We pull them up, flush them, and then we do the testing, according to the DEP protocols. So, you know, those, you know, and again, kids were not around for the week. What that means to last week's readings, I don't know. And it's gonna take a little while for this to work its way through the system, and until we can figure out what is the root cause, that's the question at this point.
So those outlets that indicated higher levels, higher than accepted levels of lead and copper, I know that we shut them down immediately at that time. So are they, what are we doing with those right now?
They are still shut down, except if they need to be flushed prior to testing.
Okay. So, I guess, one silver lining on this one, if there is one, was that we are in pretty close collaboration with the DEP. And seems like the conversation is in the direction of finding the root causes, as you said, and isolating it, so that we can focus on what we need to do in our infrastructure to eliminate the problem. Because as you said, if everything goes well in the next couple of years, we will have some remedy for East Meadow with the new building.
Right.
But high school, we still have to monitor and make sure that that water is of good quality as well. Any questions from anyone?
If it's identified to the water bubblers, are we gonna put new ones in?
Well, that's, I think that's part of this whole plumbing survey, is where does the problem exist? If there are bubblers that are original to the building, then they may have brass plumbing in them that would have lead in it. Whether it's the actual fixture itself, or it's somewhere else within the plumbing, we don't know. But that could certainly be an option, would be to swap out the bubblers for something else, certainly in that regard. So that's one way to look at that. You know, there's a whole lot of ways in which to do that. I do know that there are schools that are migrating to bubbler slash water fill station, where it senses the water bottle. Kids can bring in their own water bottles and fill them and whatever, which is obviously a more environmentally friendly option than selling bottled water or whatever. So those are all things that we can certainly take a look at. But I think, until we can get the results of the plumbing survey, and also do the test of the water source, I think we might be a little bit premature.
And what kind of timeframe do they think for this plumbing? When do we know the results of that?
Did you get any sense?
I sent out the second round of testing last Wednesday, so it should be coming tomorrow. And I'm taking testing on Wednesday morning again, sending that out Wednesday, and we should, it's a five to six day turnaround. So by the time I take the second test, the previous test should be available.
And the DEP is, the DEP has asked for the lab to expedite the results, which is probably gonna cost us more money, but, you know, we need to do it. We need to get the results as quickly as possible, so...
As of Wednesday morning, I have to do double now. I have to take the raw water sample, then run the pipe for thirty seconds, and then take a second sample. And that's gonna tell them if it is sitting overnight. That's the first reading, and then if I run it for thirty seconds, like most people do, they push the button a little bit, they let it run. Then I'm gonna take that sample, and they're gonna test that sample, and they're gonna pair them.
So based on what you're saying, I, I, I think we should reiterate that we are doing whatever we need to do. The primary concern is the health and safety of the school committee, the students, our staff. Folks should not have to worry about the water quality when they come into the schools, and they want to consume any of that. Also, I think, based on the correspondence so far with the DEP and everybody else, the labs, and based on some initial understanding of what might or might not have happened, I think we have an opportunity to make sure that we review our process. And next time, we don't find ourselves in a situation where, you know, we say, this information potentially could have been conveyed or relayed to us several months earlier, and now we're finding out. So there should be almost a error-free or full-safe process that allows us to see these problems almost immediately, so we can, we can act.
Absolutely. If I had known in October what I know now, I would have acted immediately.
So these, these tests will continue, the weekly tests will continue indefinitely?
Until they say to stop.
Right.
DEP says to stop, yes.
Okay. Alright.
And they're adding more, and they're gonna keep adding more of them.
And, and I'm actually thinking of what we shared already with the community, and what questions might come, and I'm hoping that if anyone's watching, they can have some of that information and answers to their questions. I, I believe folks have seen the initial letter that we received from the DEP, because the copies were shared with the media, and then we shared the content with the families as well. So, based on that, what is, what are some of the additional actions that we will be taking soon? And also, just to reiterate and confirm, whatever was required from us through last Friday, including the information to be sent out, the tests to be done, the redundancies to be put in place, were we confirmed that we are complying with all those requirements?
Yes. Yes, it was confirmed both by email and telephone.
By the DEP? Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Alright, thank you, Judy.
I've learned a lot about water.
Yes.
It helps to be married to an analid vocalist, too. Did you want to go back to the reports and recommendations?
Yes, we would like to go, yeah. The next item is actually gonna take all the water. So let's go back to reports and recommendations.
So the first item on the agenda are, first items are field trips. The first of which is a wrestling field trip, that we have some students who are moving on to tournaments, and we're all assembling in the room. But they went to Pittsfield this past weekend.
That's correct.
And are heading to Reading this coming weekend, which is an overnight, and then they'll be heading for their successful that far, heading to Providence, Rhode Island on March fourth and fifth. So, that's an overnight, as well as an out of state. So again, it'll depend on how the students place. They're gonna be using school vans to do the transport. Do have Mr. Don who will double check on insurance, and we are fully covered with full liability that we should have on himself. That's not an issue. So I would recommend approval.
Just to make sure that we reiterate our policy, for these, we require a school committee approval. And especially if it's out of state, we require a thirty-day prior to event school committee approval. Understanding that in some great occasions where success comes, and then we have to respond to it, like the wrestling championship, we may not have all the information for that, for that request. But what I would suggest, and I don't know if everyone will agree, if we can put a conditional request in place, at least we would know about these things that will potentially come our way. And we are hopefully becoming accustomed to be successful in our sports anyway. So whenever our teams go away for these tournaments, we just have to, actually, we have to do nothing unless they say, you know what, for what a reason, we're not gonna go. So if we can change our process a little bit, to make sure that we do not find ourselves bypassing the policy or circumventing the policy, that would be great. Other than that, it was, it was great to read about the championship, and about, what's his name?
Nolan.
Nolan Hodgson. Nolan, yes.
And the issue is the overnight is not, not so much as it's in-state, it's the overnight.
It is, it is the overnight, yeah. Overnight in-state is not as huge an issue as the, you know, out-of-state. But, you know, we should, we should actually talk about those regardless.
Sure, sure. I worked with this before, wasn't I?
I apologize for not getting this in sooner. This is a yearly type thing that we go through. And just to give you an update, as you alluded to, Nolan did take first place in the two-twenty weight category in the state championship, Division III. It's a phenomenal feat. We're so ecstatic and proud of Nolan. It's just incredible what he's accomplished to this date. This coming weekend, he goes to Reading High School, where he competes at what's called an all-state wrestling championship. Basically, Division I, II, and III. They classify, you know, all the wrestlers, and they, Nolan has a number-two seed, where he's going to compete at Reading High School. And if he places there, then he goes to New England, which is being held in Providence, Rhode Island, which would take us out of state, being that thirty-day, you know, requirement from the school committee. So this happens every single year. It's something that we should put in sooner than later, because we know what's coming up. Two or three weekends. That could very well result in overnight stays for wrestlers.
So we'll work on it.
Yeah, we'll do. So is there a motion to approve the requests? Is there a second, please? Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Wish Nolan the best.
Second field trip is a trip to New York City by the anatomy and physiology and advanced biology classes, to see an exhibit on the human body. The only thing that's missing from the packet is an NTSA safety rating for transport, but knowing the bus company that they're using, which is Peter Pan, I believe their trip, rating is pretty high. So what I would recommend is that you approve it, subject to the NTSA rating coming back, you know, satisfactory. You know, I can certainly, we can certainly get that and make sure that that's all set.
Is there a second? Okay. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, is the senior class trip, and the advisors are here as well to talk a little bit about that. There's a couple of things that, I'll let them talk in more detail in a minute. There's a couple of things that, consistent with your policy, that we have already talked about in terms of if it's a class trip, it's supposed to be like seventy-five percent of the kids. So, you know, the numbers are based on a lesser number than that right now, so obviously, we need to work on that a little bit. Again, the NTSA rating for transport, and then just making sure that we have proper nursing coverage for students on the trip as well, if there's somebody who's diabetic or has an issue that, you know, we're gonna have to, you know, think about. So those would be just the three things that I'd, you know, I would recommend approval pending that those things are buttoned up. Two of you wanna speak to the trip?
Well, as far as the nurse, the nursing, I'm not sure if there's ever been a nurse that's went on the trip. I mean, I could be wrong about that, but she gives us, we give her the list of students that are going, and she gives us their, if they have any medical conditions. Also, if they need any medication, or what they need because of their medical condition. She gives us all of that information.
And I think we won't know that answer until we actually know who signs up anyway, in terms of, you know...
Which, yeah, we have a list of...
We have our list of students interested in the senior trip, and we still have to check with the kids that go to HCC whether or not they wanna go?
We have about thirty-five students signed up so far.
How many?
Thirty-five.
Now, how many, quote, could be going, should be going?
Seventy. But we have some students who are going to HCC or to STIC. I believe we have about eight or so students in that number.
So, yeah, we're at, we're at probably like fifty, fifty-five percent of the senior class. I'm also not sure if that's for like an educational trip, because this is a senior trip, so I don't know if it's about an educational trip as much as it is a policy. I know two years ago, on the trip, we went to Cape Cod, and I know we didn't have seventy-five percent of the seniors' class. We had about the same number, maybe forty out of seventy, seventy-five.
And I chaperoned, I think it was two thousand and eleven, and I think we had about forty students who went down to New Jersey. And I think they even had more students within their senior class. I think they had about ninety or so.
So I have a couple of things. First of all, we should not hold this class to any level that we did not hold previous classes. There should be, you know, fairness in that. That's probably something we have to look at and see if it still says seventy-five percent. I thought we had lowered it, but we should look at that. Two things that, I'll be very honest, two things that concern me about this trip. One is, it seems like it's on the riskier side by nature. So whether or not it, it's increased liability, any concern on that front, one. Number two, I'm wondering whether or not, by having an activity that may not be suitable, potentially, I might be speaking out of turn, but an activity that may not be suitable or of interest to everyone, are we automatically lowering the participation rate? That's another concern that I have. The way I look at the senior trips, great events, one last hurrah, just we all go somewhere and do it. That's why the more participation we have, the better it is, but also, we wanna make sure that it is safe, not as risky. Were there any other alternatives that were considered aside from this one? Or was this the only option that we had?
I mean, on the, like, the safety, it's, it is like Whitewater rafting, but it's not, it's like a controlled, they release the water at these places. It's not like a, you know, a raging...
It's not like Colorado, just...
They like control the flow of the water, you know, they, like, I don't know if it's daily, they release the water.
They have, I think, three or four times within the spring that they do a release, and it would happen all on one of those days. They have had Boy Scout groups going to these, as well as middle school.
Yeah, it's like younger...
Taking these trips as well. And with liability, once we were to sign up for the trip, they do give us all of their liability insurance information as well. I did try to get that ahead of time, but they said you have to book it before they send it to you.
And I think two thousand and eight, two thousand seven or two thousand eight, the senior class went to this St. Beatrice place. And they also have other activities. They, one, there's kayaking, there's hiking trails, there's...
Disc golf, whatever that is.
Yeah, disc golf. So it's not, they wouldn't have to go on the river, on the boats. And of course, the people that work there, that's like their job. They're fully trained for staying. They know other river works and all that, so they have like full-time staff that do that.
So when you say trained and first aid, uh do they have a healthcare professional on the site or?
Well, like I'm saying, I was like, the people that go on the river with you, the guides, like, that's their full-time job. Like, that's what they do during the spring, summer, um fall, um as far as first aid, I.
Yeah, they they're trained in first aid and also trained um towards water rescue as well. Um we actually do have a letter that she sent us that actually documents every bit of training that they're required to do before.
Through like this, through the state of Maine.
Can we get a copy of that or? I have the same, similar, I mean, I think it's a great idea, everything for seniors to get together. When I see whitewater rafting, yeah, of course, you think it's a little riskier.
Yeah.
River wild.
Yeah, but I.
And I'm sure some parents are gonna have the same questions in terms, you know, who provides healthcare in the event that, you know, there's an emergency. And these are questions we have to ask.
Um, yeah, like I said, it's, I think a lot of very younger groups go here, Boy Scouts and groups, um things like that. So and it's not, you know, raging waters, it's pretty much just going down the river.
My question would be more about, um, and I don't know if there are any seniors who have any kind of disabilities, but I would be thinking about accessibility. So again, kind of on the same line as what you were saying, um does this preclude anyone from going? Do they have any kind of um other activities that somebody say in a wheelchair can do? I don't know if there's any seniors who have those issues, but.
We, we're not within our.
Yeah, we don't within our class, but like I said, they're, they don't have to go unless we river trip those things at the uh resort. You can call it, things to do, like, so there's trails, there's um kayaks and that, but something else, that'd be a little more, a little low-risk.
Do you, do you have any idea, did you, were able to ask the other thirty-five why they are not participating? And this, I'm asking this to understand whether or not there is anything related to finances or anything else.
I don't think financially, they were thinking about it, a couple of them were, but I think some people just didn't want to because they just didn't have an interest. But a lot of them that did were really excited about it and it was like majority of the people that said they would be interested in this trip and other people just didn't really have an interest to do that.
And I think that's kind of pretty much every, like I said, in our years of experience, if you get half, that's pretty good. I mean, I think um last year, there wasn't even a trip because they couldn't, they didn't do anything because they couldn't decide on anything or they couldn't get enough, even enough people to have interest in anything.
And with the cost as well, um the company that we'd be going through, they're offering us two free whitewater rafting passes to raffle off as well. So if students are interested in going, um it's a way that they could work as a fundraiser towards reducing their cost of going. Um depending on how many students we have going, it's going to change the price on the bus as well. On a bus for forty students is, you know, thirty-nine hundred, one-four fifty-four, depending on how many go, is forty-two. So that also is going to depend on the price as well.
Well, my understanding is we give initial approval and then you've gotta get back to us with more details, number of kids, what you've done for fundraising, and then uh then we can submit the final details. Because I think that is my correct, is we give initial approval. Do you want to continue?
That's what I, a couple of years ago, that there were some missing details.
But they'll have the details in a month or so. Yeah, I think, right, but it'll be a fair amount of time to get the who's gonna go and what the final cost will be and um.
Yeah, we would have to get, you know, an exact number of who's going, which is also difficult. Majors. Yeah, we wanna go, but.
You gotta learn deadlines, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Teach them, there's a chance to teach them deadlines.
Is this the name of the company, um Three Rivers Whitewater Rafting? Yes. So if I Googled it.
Yeah.
Did you have the feedback on the group that went years ago? I remember they did go with, was someone still here who went on that trip?
The chaperones.
And they were pleased with it, everything was.
Yeah. Well, one, yeah, one of them wants to go.
You're on your own again, okay.
Well, that's a good sign.
I think, I think one of his only complaints was that the rafts were rough enough for him.
Well, that's all right, too.
So each one of these uh, perhaps, do they have one of these guides in them or?
They do.
Yeah.
Okay.
And every person is giving, given a suit for the water as well, because it is very cold at that time of year. So they will have a survival suit that they're in as well.
You know, give instructions ahead of time.
Yeah.
Any more questions? So um I guess Jim and Judy, just also to you, I guess we're gonna give initial approval
Mm-hmm.
for follow-up with whatever information you have as far as numbers and other details. Okay, so is there a motion to give uh initial approval to have our senior trip to Three Rivers Whitewater? No, to West Forks, Maine, uh to Three Rivers Whitewater Rafting?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Good luck. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, uh I play the little resolution here on my screen. Do you mind, Mr. Chairman, if we do the financial report before we do the FY seventeen budget? Sure. Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Donahue, the floor is yours.
When you find that, I have the budget up.
Sorry.
That's all right. So. Um, the budget of, this is as of uh February seventeenth, two thousand sixteen. And as you can see, it's still, we're still projecting it to be a very tight budget. Um our projected deficit went from last month at ten thousand seven hundred dollars down to three thousand four twenty-three. And as we, over the next couple of months, that's gonna even get closer as we get towards the end of the year. We'll be able to uh determine, I think with better accuracy, where we're gonna end up at the end of the year. But I would say it's still tight. Um, we did uh uh in preparation of the fiscal seventeen budget, we did an extensive audit of all personnel uh for the FY sixteen budget to make sure we were basing the seventeen budget on accurate data. And uh based on that, uh we're in a pretty good place, I think, um with this year's budget as a result of that. Uh, really, there's pretty much nothing else since the last meeting that really stands out. I did do a uh, an analysis of the substitutes, which is yearly uh an issue here in this district. And right now, we're on track with what we budgeted for substitutes, uh unlike past years.
Can you say that again? I like that.
We're on track, we're on track, presently, presently.
Oh, come on, don't deflate my balloon.
So um, um, that's it, I'm open to questions on this, um.
The, the line of item again is the tuition within-state.
Yeah.
What happened there?
Uh again, it's just, it's just where it's charged, where things are charged, where it was set up and where it's charged. Uh, look at the, the nine thousand uh line, which is the summation of all the tuitions.
Yeah.
And that really, that really tells the story uh of what's going on there. Uh hopefully, we'll have a better handle on the FY seventeen budget of how it'll get distributed. I think uh from what I've seen of the pupil services uh request, that it's detailed pretty, pretty, pretty well for the uh, for the upcoming budget. But I, I don't think there's a problem here at all. It's everything that uh is within those lines was anticipated and uh again, right now, it's no big surprises, which is, that's a key in that line.
Yeah.
No big surprises.
So I'm actually happy to see that the, the total line is pretty much in line with what we currently have at least. From a, from a non-accountant's perspective, as I'm trying to understand where we have the gaps, we have the surpluses. Uh at the line item level, are you saying that we are still on track? Or are we saying that while those numbers are there, but as long as we are fine at the total level, we don't have to really worry about the, the id- the line item?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying. Look at the nine thousand line item, the summation.
So with that, Archie, my question, and I think, you know, we've had several conversations around this. What are, what are the obstacles? And I understand there are major uh challenges to forecasting and all that. But what are some of the obstacles to us being closer at the line item level? So when we look at it, we can just find what factors are impacting and that would inform our uh next budget and we would know what to put to put in there.
Well, you know, it really goes back, this goes back to last year's preparation of the budget. And this is where these tuitions were placed under these categories, based on what was given to us from pupil services at that time. Uh where they're getting charged now, that's a whole other issue.
And part of, part of the issue too is that with special education, it's a moving target, you know. Placements change, kids come into the district, kids go out of the district, you know, so it's really, I mean, but at, at any moment in time, the budget is a snapshot. And when it's put together, it's a snapshot. When it comes out at the other end, it's a different snapshot. July one, you basically reset the whole budget from what you approved just because of the change in students, changes in staff that happen after you approve the budget. So all, so long as we're living within our means, you know, there's always this, it's a fluid thing. You're never gonna see something that's static, this is the way we voted it and this is the way it stays, because it just doesn't happen. What we don't have currently in the system and what we will have when we move to software is an easy way for transfers or reclassifications of line items to be done. Um and working through a real solid policy and procedure for how the senior leadership team works through this whole process along with the business office. And um software is gonna give us some of that guidance um with, with being able to do that in a much easier and more efficient way than the current system that we have does. So that's as we are starting to work our way towards getting ready for that migration. Um that's one of the pieces that will be much easier is that if, for example, out-of-state tuition or, you know, private tuitions versus mass in-state, you know, something shifts there, we can much more easily reclassify funds using that software than we can right now.
Are some of these students who've gone to other vocational schools, is vocational listed here? Are those kids that we're sending to other vocational schools besides Pathfinder that are factored in here?
That's the name of the line item. I would assume right now, we do not have anybody going out of the Pathfinder district. But the name of the line item is tuitions to other stuff, including vocational. That's just how it's named in the software.
So just to, I completely agree with you. We make a budget, we have assumptions, uh we do our forecast and then that's what we have as our budget. What I'm, I'm hoping that we can have is, if we, you know, we're coming up with our budget, we said hundred students and then suddenly, hundred students in, we suddenly get ninety students or a hundred and twenty students. Is there a way to check our, our assumptions so that we can understand what worked, what did not work? Um, we can't do anything about the past. In fact, once we budget the, uh we submit the budget and get uh approval from a town meeting, that's our budget and we try to stay within those means, agreed. But I think we have an opportunity to get some learnings out of these as well. If three years in a row, we are over-budgeting for the incoming students or under-budgeting for outgoing students, maybe we can adjust certain things. So it's the learnings that I'm looking for as opposed to saying, you know, we did this right or wrong.
I think.
And when we talk about FY seventeen.
Something I think you learned that.
That we've made some of the changes.
Yeah.
So, you know, just some things as I went through the budget and looked at how things were coded and said, hmm, why is this expense over here when it really runs over there? So we're trying to, again, in preparation for this migration with software, to get things coded properly. To give you a quick example, in central office, you have legal counsel as a school committee. It's always been charged to the business office. It's really a school committee expense. So in FY seventeen, that's where the money lives, because it's your legal counsel, it's not the finance office. Legal counsel is yours. That's where it should be charged to. So we've looked at some of those kinds of things to say, are there things that are not being charged, you know, to certain places? Um, you know, Mary Burks has been excellent at being able to really nail down our tuitions in terms of where students are attending and whatever, and getting a real good handle on that so that the numbers are living in the right places. So again, there's some shifts that you'll see between sixteen and seventeen as a result. So we've really, really tried to, in this whole zero-based budget thing, give a look-see. And if something's in the wrong place, then we've moved it to the right place.
So how are we doing on the, on the, on the grant side? So grants are not included in this view that we have in front of us, right?
Right.
So how are we doing on that front? Is everything going according to plan or do we have any gaps?
Yes.
No, everything is going according to plan.
Yeah.
One to one, or is there anything that we have to worry about, just everything's?
I mean, we file amendments. I've already amended the Title I grant once. Um and I've got an amendment to do to that as well as to Title II-A, just because it looks like we need some funds in a different line. So I have to file with the state to get the money moved into a different line. And then once they approve that, then we can expand in a different kind of way against that one, so.
All right, so I have any questions? Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Archie.
You're welcome.
All right, drumroll FY seventeen, here we go. All right, um I wanted to say at the outset, and the senior leadership team is here, and Cheryl, hi, how are you? Awesome. Uh, so um we um are here to present what is a work in progress. We want you to understand that. This is a first draft and like a first draft of anything. It's a little rough around the edges still, but um we've worked long and hard uh to try and get at least a first stab at this. And if you remember, um so let me, I did drop it into Google Drive for those of you who need that. I did email it for those of you who can do that, um because that's how hot off the press this thing is. And I'm going to show you a different kind of look-see here. And because of the resolution of this projector and my laptop, it's gonna be kind of funky, but anyway, make it work. Come on, there you go. For some reason, we are in a bizarre way here today, for some true way. Let's at least get some key some issues taken care of. Oh, I almost do it though on here. So, um, the Budget Master uh overview page is There we go. Uh it's gonna look a lot different than what you're used to seeing. You're gonna see a lot more detail in it. Um like I say, we are still working on that, the budget document you have. The budget document you have, each one of these lines on this front all funds page is backed up by detail for each department or each cost center that you can see. You'll start to see it actually being populated out down, down below here. And in the interest of not boring everybody to tears, I am not going to go through the entire, you know, detail of everything, you can kind of take a peek at that. But again, the columns that are coded in green are the all funds. If you remember from our definition of all funds budget, it means every expenditure and every funding source, all grants, all revolving accounts, everything. And if you were to scroll, you will see that we have populated, you know, some lines across the top with that. With our grants, what we're looking at is a level funding from this year, because again, we don't have a sense on where any of those grants are at. So that's where we start with that. And then we do some things like school choice, that's the House One number from the governor. Circuit breakers, what we anticipate will be a balance for next year, that moving forward. Custodial revolving, what we anticipate will be a balance there. Athletic revolving, what we anticipate. So as you work your way down, the yellow columns represent what is going to come out of what is the LEA or a combination of chapter one, uh, chapter one, I'm all right, chapter seventy, and what the town gives us. So after we siphon off all the revolving accounts, all the grants and whatever, the LEA is your locally appropriated budget funded by both the state and your local tax dollars. So you can see that there are lines for each one of these. And again, you can be looking at your own copy of this, because it is a little hard with the resolution issue to be able to deal with this in this particular setting. But you'll see some, some swings. Some of them are a lot larger than others because of a whole lot of other things that are going on. You get down to the bottom and looking at green totals, you know, we're about a million up. But again, there are some things that we haven't populated out into some of the revolving accounts. For example, we've accounted for about half of the school choice. We're trying to figure out where are the places to apply costs off the school choice revolving. So that will lower that number a little bit. There's been some lummblings at the state level that what we may see in further iterations of the budget is an uptick to chapter seventy, which happened last year as well. Governor's number was low, the legislature upped it, and it did stick. So, you know, again, we have to wait for that whole process to take place as well. So without trying to bore everybody to tears in this one, let's go here. I'm ready. And each one of the principals and/or department heads is here to speak to the budget, and this whole crooked thing makes me crazy. So let me see if I can get my laptop out of the way. And I'll get this taken care of. Well, it's going to be crooked, it is, and I have to order a look at it. So, as I said earlier, this is a work in progress. We talked about four different types of budgets last time, and we're at that first stage of we've identified the needs by going back to zero and trying to rebuild the budget. There's also, you know, a lens of level service. You look at what you did last year and what level service looks like, level funded, and then the famous, as I've come to know it, gap budget of Bramby, which is, we have this, but the town says this, and how we get to that gap. So we've got a long way to go. And again, just talking about the all funds and the local education agency, the LEA, in terms of how we take a look at this. So the master sheet that I just walked you through shows you those differences, the changes you will see populated in a little more detail in each of the detail tabs. So as you get a chance to take a look at this in your leisure time, between now and the next meeting, when we take a little closer look at things, some of the details, some of the changes are changes in coding, and some of them are particular rest, requests for needs, whether it be staffing or some other things that we're looking at. So that's where we are. So, that said, I'll start. Some of the highlights from the school committee's budget is, again, we moved the legal retainer from finance into the school committee, because it made sense to be able to do that.
May I just discuss one quick thing? This year, I think you did the same thing already, right? Just you moved, you moved legal retainer to the school committee? Because it's, it's around twenty thousand dollars.
No. It, it, a legal retainer is sixty-two fifty this year.
No, the overall school committee, and the only reason, just let me go to, the reason why I'm asking. If twenty thousand dollars is inclusive of legal retainer, and that's basically based on what we were doing before, I think we should, I know it's probably a matter of a couple of thousand dollars more, but it's important nonetheless, I think there will be an inclination to participate in the annual conference of MASC and MASSS?
There is a thousand dollars in driving.
Okay. And also go to the day on the hill event?
Yep, so there's a thousand dollars that's going to put place in driving, and you'll see that on the detail sheet. In the finance and administrative services, two things that we wanted to highlight, because technology also lives in that particular section. One of the things that was not well articulated in earlier iterations of the budget that we really clarified in a zero-based kind of way is taking a look at district-wide site licenses for things. And then having them paid for at the district level, rather than, say, your student information system's being paid a little from this school or a little from that school, that doesn't make any sense. If it's a district-wide service, it should be funded at the district-wide level. So we did a lot of that. So things like Blackboard Connect, things like Redaker, our student information system, the adline stuff, the Talented, recruit and hire, and the SchoolSpring job site stuff, you know, all of that kind of stuff. Teach Point, the educator evaluation thing, is all living in that line now. Very clearly articulated, David did a really good job of, you know, putting out feelers to all of these companies, what are we looking at for next year and that kind of thing. So those numbers are driven by his conversations with those various vendors. There's also in, and I didn't put it up as a bullet, there's also a rather large increase in the salary in the technology department. That is not David's pay raise, we're just to be really clear. David, right now, has had some part-time help that has gone away. The person has gone to work for another company. So David literally is a one-man show. And if you've ever looked at David at the end of a workday, David looks pretty bedraggled most workdays. David needs some help.
Is this the point where all cameras turn to David?
I mean, David, David does a fabulous job. I don't know how he does what he does, to be honest with you. He really needs a network technician. So the uptick in that salary is a request for a network technician, full-time, to work with him. And also some, some summer technical help when machines are being reimaged and cleaned out and whatever. So, so that's, so if you see that large uptick, it's not a giant pay raise that David has gotten, although he probably deserves it, but it is to give him the person help that he really needs to be able to do what needs to be done, particularly as we start to look at more infusion of technology into instruction. You know, we're getting to a point where it's the tipping point for him, so that's in there. There's a line called supervisory, which is really for the pupil services administrative costs. It's the director's salary. I put a placeholder in, I haven't really decided around what the new director's salary range is, but I put a placeholder number, and we can talk more about that later. You know, secretarial help, generic supplies, and whatever else. And then there's a district-wide miscellaneous that happened to currently be living in, under the high school's budget. I'm not sure why it's there, so we're moving it into the school committee's budget. There's a salary contingency for things like teacher goes out on sick leave or maternity leave, needs a long-term sub. At that point, the salary would then be put into the sub-line for that particular school building, but this is just a, a holding place for that kind of stuff. There's a longevity retirement contingency in the teacher's contract, for example, there's a required notice ahead of time that people intend to retire. So we, okay, we've got letters from, you know, teacher X, Y, and Z, okay, what's their retirement buyback? Or we know a paraprofessional's going to retire in the coming year. So that's where that money lives. And then just some miscellaneous contingency. I think, Deanne, this sort of speaks to some of the, of the issues that you have around what happens if we have some major piece of equipment go down. We had a fire panel that had to be replaced in this building. That's ten thousand dollars that has to be found from somewhere. So this gives you a little wiggle room in that line to be able to do that. So that's the highlights from central office. Moving on. Mr. Sullivan? Hi.
Hello.
Do I have to say anything about this or not? Or, probably not.
Any questions, I?
And I got to tell you, this is another man who, besides doing yeoman's work at the job he does, and he comes in every day with a smile, God love him, you know, he sat and spent a lot of time with accounts payable to really just get his hands on the actual history of the spending in maintenance. And you keep asking why there's deficits, because you've been grossly under-budgeted in the maintenance department. So there's some, again, some upticks in some lines there, and the reason for it is because you haven't been budgeted according to the way the bills have been coming in. So let's, let's get that up to where it needs to be. Personnel-wise, we're looking to restore the maintenance custodian position that was removed from this year's budget. We have somebody that's now split between the town and the school department, so we really need a second set of hands, particularly when it comes to things like snow removal. You know, John's spending his whole day driving a truck plowing snow instead of doing other things that he should be doing. So, and we just need, you know, another handyman type person on board, so. And then the other ask under personnel is to add an extra half full-time equivalency, second shift custodian. Right now, you have one and a half over there and two and a half over here, and it's really not enough. We really need two full-time night custodians here, and you need a full-time night custodian over there. It's just not working up to the standards that, and John has some pretty high standards. I've seen him, so, you know, the standards of quality of work and whatever, and it's not for lack of effort, it's just lack of time, so. Anything else you want to say, or how'd I do, boss?
You are perfect.
Wow, awesome. The rest of you are not off this one. But John, right, because he's new at this, but the rest of you are on. So that's the highlights of plant operations and maintenance.
Judy?
Yes?
Just a quick question. So I, we recently did that, just the, the maintenance custodian position that was not filled. So this is based on our learnings, I'm assuming that.
Yes.
Even though we thought it could be done, it can't be done, is that what we're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, I think we did this in an effort to get to the gap budget. And the last place we wanted to impact was the classroom. So this was a retirement, we took advantage of not refilling the position, but we've since discovered that John's running like a one-on-paper hanger, and we'll need a second set of hands now, in addition to the one that's being shared. Dave Turcot, who works on the town side, is working on the school side. And he does a great job. He comes in, John gives him tasks to do, and he gets work to him. Very thorough, very well done. Quality of work is, is really high, but again, with attending to the town buildings as well, it's really just not.
This person's also, is this person, if we, if it goes, we're going to work at just the schools or?
Oh, no, they, both of them would be shared, and I think it would be a case of then, John's got two skillsets to look at, and who's got the skillset to do this thing over here and who's got, you know, hopefully, we can find somebody who's got some complementary skillsets to Dave Turcot that, you know, can be helpful.
And how are we sharing those costs with the town? They should not all appear in our budget?
No. No. This particular position I just put in our budget because obviously, Dave Turcot's still being paid by the town, so I mean, all of it would be shared, and by our memorandum of agreement with the next round of negotiations with the custodians, we'll actually fold that position into the custodial contract anyway. So it's a wash, whether we pay for one and they pay for one, or whatever, it's all a wash at the end. And the other thing that I didn't put down here, but now that we've had a discussion about water, and that is, you know, we talked about John getting a license, and he is more than willing to do that, to be a water operator. But I'm going to tell you, our Achilles' heel in this has been the fact that we have one person who's a water operator, and there's no, at the high, at the level of licensure that we need, and there's no redundancy in the system. We have been paying for lab testing as a separate item. I think we need to keep with a vendor like Whitewater. They have a company full of people who are licensed, so redundancy is built into the system. The lab costs are part of the contract, you know, unless there's an overcharge for like an expedited report, which we'll have to pay for. But, you know, we've paid in the past about five thousand dollars a year for testing. We're probably talking maybe double that amount for the water operator, but the requirements, because I've become best friends with the folks at Whitewater, the requirements to get license are also astronomical. There's coursework, there's exams to sit for, and, and you don't get the license until you apprentice with somebody. So you're going to have to have a contracted water operator anyway. So again, I watch what John does, and he was a fine. We are not letting him go, or at least I'm not anyway. And Cheryl, I would say the same thing for you. John had, John does way over and above what any human being should be expected to do. And I don't think it's fear to him to saddle him. I mean, he does some of the sampling and testing under their license anyway, so that would still continue, some of the daily work. But, you know, I don't think to expect him to be a water operator on top of trying to run all of the buildings in town is a fair thing to ask. So that would be my recommendation.
Just, just a quick clarification, if you mind. When we use the word redundancy, it may have a negative connotation for folks who may not understand what we mean by that. But in this case, redundancy is a good thing.
Absolutely.
Because it's a, it's a critical issue, it's a safety issue. If it's missed right here, we want it to be caught immediately after that. So by redundancy, we mean almost a backup in the process that will catch whatever, if not caught at the first instance.
Right, absolutely. So, you know, one of, you know, John gets sick and he's out for a period of time, then we have to scramble to find a probably licensed water operator to do what needs to be done. Somebody at Whitewater gets sick, they have somebody already there. It's just, hi, you're out, okay, so you're on. You know, I mean, it's that simple. And to me, it's money well spent.
Is that worked into this budget?
Yes.
What do we have in here? Is that a contract?
Yep. It's under the drinking water line.
Okay, good.
Okay, health services, you are not off the list.
Please, please do so. So part of our budget is grant-funded, the Essential School Health Services Grant, which we're projecting to stay the same. There's an increase in health services based on the supplies that we're expected to stock, meaning the epinephrine. And you remember back in May when I put the Narcan on the standing orders? All that kind of stuff has a shelf life. I've taken advantage of free grant monies for EpiPens in the past, and you can only apply so many times, so that would be out of pocket. We're also going to centralize certain health supplies throughout the district, so that it's coming out of one, one line. And I'm also looking to increase the school physician salary. It's been very minimal for many years. And in order to recruit a pediatrician who would be more available for meetings and whatnot, I'm looking to increase that so that it's the same comparable to districts around us. Do you have any questions?
So your projection, despite that increase that you're talking about, your projection seems to be the same as last year, fiscal year of sixteen?
For the essential services, health services grant, yeah. That, that, this year's grant is forty-nine, two-hundred. We've level funded that, because again, we don't know what's coming. It could be higher than that, it could be lower than that. We just have to wait and see what happens at the state level.
One question.
Yeah.
Do you know what increase in the school physician salary would look like?
Yeah, he currently gets two thousand, and I'm looking for four thousand. I mean, not an astronomical amount, but it's one of the lower averages. Two thousand is unheard of, it's been that way for a long, long time. And Judy and I are working on. And Judy and I are working on recruiting and having it be a yearly contract where the school physician applies, and we look at them and hire them. So in order to, you know, send out letters, hey, come be our school physician, I would like to see that increase to form out, to be competitive.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on.
UCL services.
Sorry, I apologize for my talking. Basically, what we're looking at is, what's important to notice as you look at the budget is the funding that will come from grant monies and/or circuit breaker. The largest of those amounts will come from the 240 grant, which is the Special Education Entitlement Grant, which is just, this year, just under $270,000 that will go towards tuitions. And circuit breaker is money that we receive from the state to offset high-cost special education students in district or out of district. And we project $290,000 next year that will also offset tuition costs. In terms of thinking about tuitions and other ways to use that money that might be more cost-effective and efficient and deal with more students in a lesser restrictive environment, we're also looking at developing an in-house program for students with social, emotional, and behavioral needs. It's where we see a pocket of students being tuitioned out that we could potentially bring back into the district and service them in a less restrictive environment, gives them more access to all the classes and extracurricular activities that their peers have access to. So it's, we're looking at that as well.
Yeah, so that may change some of the tuition numbers that you see, you know, if we potentially could bring some kids back and reallocate those funds into in-house programs.
So I'm assuming as we go further into this process, you'll be able to tweak and pull no numbers at some point.
Right.
Questions?
I have a question on the tuition to non-public schools. Looks like in fiscal, and you might have already mentioned this, but in fiscal 16, pardon me, just tuition to out-of-state schools. Non-public schools, let's just switch that. So there is actually a difference between all funds and LEA, which I'm assuming part of it was covered with grants and all that.
Yeah.
When we look at the projections for fiscal 17, both lines are the same.
We haven't populated that out yet, because we need to look at, again, this is part of that mix of are we going to bring some of these children back, which would impact how much lives in that line and how much we will put against those grants.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did I steal your thunder?
No.
Okay.
I said you could just, you were welcome to it, felt.
Start the law. Okay, sure, Dr. Hool. So at the junior, senior high school, basically, our staffing changes are a result of some modifications and revisions through our program. Studies that we're looking at, you know, starting with world language. If you recall, last year, through a retirement, we proceeded to do a sort of study where, you know, I, this time last year, I updated you that I wanted to do a study with regards to world language to junior, senior high school. Talking to Dr. Hool, surveying parents, talking to students. We'd like to introduce Latin next year to our students. There's a number of reasons why. I've been working with a consultant from UMass who chairs the preparation program there. She's really excited about the students that she has, and has been working with Amber Schools, been working with Foulter Town Schools, and a number of schools in terms of what Latin can do for our students. It came up very high in the surveys that we had in terms of the student interest. So we'd like to include that in our program studies and see where that brings us in terms of enrollment. So that would result in a .5 increase, which would bring our world language up to ease to 3.0. With regards to middle school art, if you recall, last year, once again, through a reduction that we had to sustain at the middle school, we asked our middle school teachers to teach out of their comfort area, out of their certification. Currently, our seventh grade social studies teacher and our eighth grade social studies teacher are teaching art. We'd like to bring in a middle school certified art teacher that could handle those sections, which would, in turn, would free them up to be teaching their content areas to students, bringing down class sizes. And then lastly, with the substitute teachers, as Dr. Hool had mentioned earlier, in the junior, senior high school, the rest, the line item for substitute teachers, we're just looking to spread that across the three schools. In the area of technology, we had a teacher come to us, our current computer science teacher come to us, Dr. Hool, myself, a couple weeks ago, stating that he'd like to teach AP Computer Science and get trained over the summer. He was really ecstatic about it. He thought that it would be a nice sort of segue to our students who are currently taking computer science. So he'd like to give up four weeks of the summer to get trained in teaching AP Computer Science. And with that, maybe David, you could talk to a little bit about the expenditure that that would entail?
If that course is offered, it would require us to buy some tablets, a very specific type of tablet to support the curriculum for that class.
So that's basically the junior, senior high school?
Yeah, when you said Latin is a .5?
.5.
What about middle school art?
Be .4.
.4?
Yeah.
And you can find these positions?
Well, the art teacher for the middle school is shared with the elementary schools, so that person is down to a .6, so we're restoring that position to full-time.
And you can find an apt language teacher?
Or, you know, whether we look at a full-time teacher. I mean, we haven't gotten drilled onto the specifics of how that would be staffed, but obviously we'd need a licensed, a teacher who would get licensed to teach Latin, so...
Like Dr. Hool said, you know, a .5 FTE increase could, you know, reshuffle our world language enrollment, meaning that we currently have 2.0 FTEs in Spanish and a .5 FTE in French. Once course selection sheets go out, we see where the numbers fall, and we might have to look at Spanish, French, and Latin and see how it can get to the three, meaning that it may not be what it currently is with a .5 Latin. It could be a 1.0 Latin, and then, you know, who knows, based on sign-ups where we go with students. It's hard to tell. You can only, you know, do so based on what kids are interested in teaching.
And this one, this was based on demand, Jen, Latin?
Yes, the idea that we were going to introduce another world language into our, remember, we stopped offering French one last year, as well as the exploratory French classes in middle school, with the idea that we were going to, you know, bring another, or reintroduce it the following year, based on some survey data that we obtained from kids and parents.
And other languages will be available through virtual high schools still, if anyone's interested?
Yeah. David, do you want to talk about any of the other hardware, software stuff?
Yeah, the high school, in the preliminary budget for the high school, I put in some laptop slash cloud books to replace and also increase our inventory of laptops and cloud books. I put in, obviously, the tablets that I mentioned. Also LCD monitors for all the classrooms. Believe it or not, a lot of our, the majority of the classrooms in this building, not the computer labs, but the actual classrooms, are still using CRT monitors, which are very, very inefficient. And I also put some, a network upgrade in. There, a good part of the network infrastructure, the wiring in this building is 20-plus years old and is only capable of supporting, believe it or not, one-tenth the bandwidth that's recommended for internal networking. So that would be a multi-year project. I put in one to do a small portion of the building for next year.
So probably this is the obvious thing, but I'm assuming all those align with everything else that we're talking about.
Yes.
So this is not necessarily an investment for, for the future or anything, this is aligning with whatever curriculum changes we are making so that we can meet the requirements of those classes? Is that what it is?
Yes, that class and every other class, I mean, you know, we're using more and more technology and more and more teachers and all the different content areas are using it. We need to, we need to upgrade the network to support that, so that they can use it.
Thank you.
Next. Ms. Champagne?
All right. So in terms of staffing, we currently have four sections in grade six, but based upon our current enrollment, that would be going down to three sections of sixth grade as those students move over to seventh grade. I'm also proposing an increase in special education for .5 para-professional, and I would like another full-time special education teacher. Really, those are coming out of the needs of students and really just to better meet those needs as they start to increase and we look at really servicing all students at that middle school. And also looking at additional stipend for the special education team leader. Currently, we have grade-level team leaders, but a very important component of our school is also the special ed department, and including those on the conversations, and we have team leader meetings. And so having that, having the special ed department also involved in those meetings and having that responsibility to lead those teachers is a very important role. I also included items that were previously paid for by PTO, as well as also paid for by the Grammy Music Parents. They have taken over many of the costs over the years as things have been really tight in our budget, but they really are a responsibility of the school, and so I added those into our budget. They are really our responsibility. And then technology. That would be David again.
At East Meadow School, I also put in to replace the old inefficient CRT monitors with newer LCD monitors. At East Meadow, it's, they, that will also occur in the computer lab because the computer lab is still, is using the older monitors. So there's a significant amount of that in East Meadow's budget. I also put in for some additional docking cameras and some projectors because they're needed in the classrooms. Every teacher needs one. It's an actual, it's an instructional tool that's replacing the chalkboard. And we need to have a, it's so integral to the classroom, we need to have a couple spares in each building because when they go down, we have to provide a quick replacement for the teacher.
Any questions?
Jen, you're talking nine classroom teachers next year?
Yes, we currently have three fourth grades and three fifth grades, and we have four sixth grades. And so that four is, they're moving on. And so we currently have, I think it's 70 students in grade five serviced by three teachers. And so that would stay the same.
So you're having three fourth grade?
We have three fourth grades as well.
How about next year, three fourths?
Three fourths, yeah.
Okay, what's happening with the fifth grade?
So fourth grade, we have incoming 54 students, and so we're looking at three sections. And we could open that up for school choice a little bit. Grade five for next year is 70. And I'm sorry, it's grade five and 70, and next year, grade six would be 64 students. And so that would be three sections in each grade.
Three fourths, three fifths, three sixths.
Correct.
And you're looking for three sped teachers now?
Correct. We have it really, honestly, to really meet the needs of all the students in the school. In addition to pull-out classes, there's also the special ed teachers, which I think a lot of people might not realize. They also are excellent interventionists who can provide intervention through the RTI model, the response to intervention model. And as we look at trying to meet the needs of all students, there are the special education teachers that are very skilled and trained and working with special ed populations, but they bring a valuable skill that can really help with all students. And so in order to really look at meeting the needs of all those students through the RTI model, it helps to have an additional special ed teacher. We also have an increase in the number of needs. It's not, in my opinion, special education isn't about number of students, it's looking at the needs of the particular students, and the needs have increased over time.
And what do you have for art teacher in East Meadow?
We currently have, it's, well, it's a shared position with last grade.
So what would it be total?
She's a .6.
Yeah.
How about PE?
I have the point of, I have a .6. I mean, yeah, she has the same number of classes.
Is that being adjusted at all with, there's less classrooms, K through six?
We haven't had those conversations.
I'm not saying there should or not. There should be more, I think. Music, same?
Yes.
Everything's the same. We haven't really had those discussions at this point.
So going back to what you just said, that it's not about, it's about quantity of the service we're providing to the students, it's not necessarily a linear numbers game or it's not a calculation that is straightforward that way. It may help if, this is our first look at this, if in the upcoming versions, if we can put some explanation as to why the .5 para and the one additional special ed teacher is important, what impact that's going to have. Because linear thinking will lead to say, hey, you know, we are actually reducing one class, and you're asking to increase numbers on the other side, how do you explain that difference? I'm sure there is a good explanation for the gap, but it would be good for us to have that. So we can, at the end of the day, when we look at all these numbers, we also have a view of what may or may not be absolutely essential, crucial. I know it's all important, but if we get to that point, we should have a view of that as well.
I actually wrote down, I guess, just some words for myself, but what will be different? You know, thinking more broadly, because we have to kind of explain it to the community, right? And these are all really great things, increasing maintenance and software and hardware and teachers and, you know, increasing the physician's salary and all that. So what's going, how is it going to look different if, you know, we were to do all of these things and you were to walk into each school? What's going to be different? Is the school's going to be cleaner or the, do you know? Because that's what people want to know.
Yeah. Your schools are going to be cleaner. If you've got additional custodial staff, they're going to be in better repair because you're going to have an extra set of maintenance hands. One of the things that Jen has done at East Meadow in terms of trying to use the special education teachers more as interventionists is she's got two teachers, a regular education teacher and a special education teacher who are co-teaching in a class. And I've been in that class and passed that class with her, and at one breath, it's the regular teacher giving the lesson and the special ed teacher is helping all students, not just kids with special needs. I'll walk by a different day, and the special ed teacher is delivering the lesson, and the regular ed teacher is making the rounds and doing whatever. So they're finding how they work as instructors and who should be taking the lead on teaching the lesson versus who should be helping out. It's pretty seamless in that class, but with only two special ed teachers for three grade levels, it's hard to promulgate that model, and they're having some really good success. So it's a model that certainly we'd like to see expanded, but it's difficult to do with two teachers and three grade levels to cover.
Yeah, so I think if we can qualify that and explain that, get it out there more. Because, you know, some people might look at this and just say, oh, there's $10,000 and, you know, budget and this and that, and I understand what Amber is saying as far as essentials, but we're trying to think differently. So I think we need to communicate differently.
And I think, you know, David has been, again, incredible, even tech doctors from other districts would come here and say, you have, what, 99% of your equipment is donated? I mean, people are just blown away by that. But we're getting some company or some agencies castoffs. So the shelf life of them is short because they're at the end of their lives. David spends a lot of time harvesting parts from one donated item to throw into another donated item. You know, again, it's a lot of time and energy that he's putting into trying to piece something together, whereas if we can use some of this thinking, and also when the new building comes, and as I said, when the new building comes along, there'll be some technology that's done in there, then in the long haul, what you should be doing is you've got a replacement plan that every three years, you're swapping out equipment. People need to understand that with technology, it's like buying a car. Every few years, you gotta get something new because they only last so long. Every few years, you gotta get something new because they only last so long. So, and the advances in technology and how it can be used puts things out of date pretty quickly. So I think people need to understand that we may be actually spending less money, say, on textbooks and more money on technology. How are we going to redeploy our dollars in ways that make sense for 21st century learning skills that are authentic in their, in their usage? And how are we going to do that?
Right. And I'm imagining that if David had a full-time IT person and more software and access to more software and hardware, that frees him up to start thinking differently.
Right.
Right? So that's what I'm interested in. How, what does that mean to him? You know, like if he...
Don't put him on the spot.
I'm not saying now, but this is, start thinking in terms like, I would like to know if you could think differently and you're not spending your time fixing things that are broken all the time.
Or driving to pick a vanload of stuff up.
What would that free you up for?
Whole bucket load of stuff.
That's what I'm, that's what I'd like to know.
Right. And one of the things that...
That I think other people would be interested in knowing as well.
When I first came here, I realized he was not a regular part of the senior leadership team. He now is. He's at every meeting with us. Not that he wants to spend more time at meetings, but he's now hearing conversations about how people are envisioning using technology in the classroom that he can then say, oh, I know about this device or I can do some investigation into this system to deploy that. One of the things we're looking at at the junior, senior high is the potentiality of doing a team-based learning classroom, of turning one of our computer labs into that kind of model and looking at something similar to what's being offered at UMass. And I'm trying to get us in for a tour so that we can take a look at that. But, you know, stations where kids can collaborate and they've got their own projector and smartboard technology, but yet there's a central something where the instructor can then put it out for everybody to see, you know, what somebody's done or whatever else. So that we've got more of this sort of collaborative inquiry-based kind of learning where kids are really solving real-world problems in ways that are different. So hopefully I'll hear back about a tour soon because David, John, and I are going to go on a field trip.
Yay!
It's not overnight and it's not out of state, so whatever. But, you know, again, just, again, for, for David's trying to imagine something he's never laid eyes on. And, you know, I've seen videos of the team-based learning classrooms. I'd love to go in and see what the classroom itself actually looks like. So I have a contact at UMass that we're trying to get, you know, in to be able to look at what does it, not that we could buy the Cadillac that that is, but how could we imagine it happening in Gramby so that we have some, some ways to take a peek at that, so.
So just to follow up on what Deanne said, and you mentioned real-world learning and all that, which is, you know, part of our vision. So I would also be interested and primarily be interested on how all these things align with our strategic plan. So that when we say, you know, we're going to make these changes, we're going to increase spending on some of these things, here's how they align with our strategic thinking.
Sure, yep.
That, I think that's, that's a, it's an easier and better story to tell because that then aligns with where we want to be in the future. So we can put all that to...
Yeah, I think that's the next, part of the next steps in the iterations of the budget is to put together the narrative.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's where we're kind of going with this, right? And what we expect as we're moving through this process. Because, you know, this is just like... It'll help us understand. Yes, it'll help us put context to, to the numbers.
Next.
Oh, there are orders that are on my page. Okay, that's all right. Increase in kindergarten from two sections to three sections, offset by school choice. Grade two also increases section and again, offset by school choice. Inclusion of items paid by PTO, currently they are paying for our folders, our recounts program, our recorders for third grade. And as far as the staffing, I can say that currently, if you look at our first grade, we currently have 49 students that would be going into two classrooms. And over the course of the summer, we usually get four to six students in second grade typically. Those numbers would be huge for a primary classroom. They really would. In kindergarten, we're looking at, according to the census, we're looking at 44 students. But until we have our kindergarten registration mid-March, we won't really know our numbers. So those are soft numbers right now. So that's what we are looking at.
And David.
West Street's needs are similar to East Meadow. They do need some additional docking cams and some projectors. And we need to remove the CRT monitors from the classrooms and put in some LCD monitors, not only to get the better quality image, but to save on electricity, save a lot of electricity.
Quick question. Grade two going to grade three, staying two teachers?
Grade two going to grade three.
You have two right now, right? They're staying what?
No, we keep it, we keep three.
At each grade.
They're pretty tight at two.
How many teachers are added at West Street? Two, new, two FTE, two full-time?
Just to clarify, when we say kindergarten from two sections to three, offset by choice, what does that mean exactly?
Well, I mean, the numbers would be low enough that we could accept some school choice students. So if we bring some school choice dollars in, we wouldn't see them immediately, but there's adjustments that happen during the course of the year. They, you know, we will get an adjustment in, you know, midway through the year. And if the numbers are up a little bit, we'll get a little uptick in, in school choice. So that, those could potentially offset some of the expense of having those extra teachers. Not all, but some.
Thank you. Nice to have you.
Athletics. Mr. Tebow!
I don't need Tebow. So I, I'd say the coaches, we look at all the coaches that we currently have now and just to increase, you know, their pay by the numbers and who we have coming in. Because right now, everyone should be back for every season. Obviously, if someone new comes on, then they start at the step one and that number would adjust down further. Transportation, we increased because every year, we've always been under-budgeted. Part of the reason by that is we do have very successful athletic teams here which make playoffs. And obviously, that's another two, three, maybe even four or five games, depending on how far they do make it. And I really don't see the programs declining with the kids coming up, you know, teaching at the other school now and seeing the boys and girls that are coming up and how they kind of transition here. I really don't see that number really going down for how successful some of the teams are going to be throughout the next, you know, couple of years here and so on. Field maintenance, just to make a new line item, I know the field maintenance committee came in here and that, and we've kind of all had a talk at multiple levels from here on down, but making that a line item. So there is money in the local line item so we can pull money for that to upkeep the fields with the overseeding, the fertilization and all the improvements that you've kind of seen over the past couple of years in the back. You know, that committee and the people that volunteer their time and help, I mean, it's been a huge difference. Just the appearance and even other teams coming here to see fields that never had dugouts before and now there's dugouts, there's, you know, flag out back, all the stuff that has been done, the time and effort by some of these committee members and parents on weekends, really says a lot about, you know, their support for the athletics here at the, you know, junior, senior high school and even for the younger kids to go out. They helped work the concession stands from East Meadow. Last year, Bunch did that and they're all excited about it and they can't wait to play at the high school on the big field. So it, it does really make a huge difference in that. The last item is just kind of throwing a bug in the air right now with Amherst High School approached me, their athletic director. Their numbers are very low over there. And he asked me to kind of do a little bit of a survey, which we did at the junior, senior high school to see how many kids would be interested in playing football. Because if his numbers are low enough, they would need us to co-op with them to play football in order to keep their program running over there. You know, we did the survey. There's definitely at least 12 to 20 kids interested and have had football experience, whether they're playing in Belchutown, whether they're playing in South Hadley. So I'll have more information from him about what it would look like, what the cost would be on our end in regards to sending kids there. Currently, we do co-op obviously with hockey where, you know, the kids pay the user fee. We write a check to them from the user fee and then everything else is the cost is on the parents with the ring time and all that because that's kind of more expensive here. They already have a football field, they have all the equipment. It does need to get reconditioned and stuff like that. So those are questions I have for him on how that would work. But, you know, talking to Mr. Cavallo and even the kids that, it may be an opportunity and nothing's guaranteed, there's a lot of interest. And I think it would keep some more kids here at Gramby Junior, Senior High School rather than school choice and out to Belchutown or South Hadley just to play football. And we had lacrosse program, even though I wasn't athletic director, that kept kids here that were looking to go elsewhere. So I think this is a good thing looking on to the future if it does work out. He's going to look at his numbers and like I said, just kind of put it on there just so you could kind of hit a bug in the ear. Like I said, and as I get more information, I can present it to you and see where we might go in the future in regards to, you know, football and the athletic program.
Are we potentially hurting any other sport by, you know, 12 to 20 kids play?
Looking at, looking at the people that, looking at the kids that I surveyed from those, you're not really pulling from the soccer, for instance, boy soccer, that was a concern with their coach. And looking at the kids that are interested in it, it's not really pulling from the kids that already play. It will maybe pull for, like right now, four or five kids that are, you know, seniors this year that went out and played because if you didn't have a football team, he might lose a couple of those kids. But he's not going to lose that core group of kids that are interested in that now. You know, even some of the kids that ran across country, a couple, you might lose one or two because now there is football and some of these kids have played at the youth level and wanted to play in high school, but either didn't get into the school that they did school of choice at or, you know, didn't really, wanted to go through that process to go somewhere else because they did want to stay here with their peers that they grew up with and the teachers that they've known and things like that. So I don't think it's going to affect us a lot. I think you might lose a couple athletes that would go out and play soccer because there's nothing else that they may be interested in. But looking at the numbers and stuff, I don't think you're really going to lose that core group that would, you know, offset and we wouldn't be able to field a soccer team or have a soccer program.
So you put the athletic, I mean, the transportation up to like $30,000?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was the new contract that came through from first student.
And how does the, how does the athletic revolving dovetail with this? What's the difference? What's, what's revolving used for for athletics and what?
Right now, when I can, the revolving is used for basically coaches' salary.
Salary.
So if you do the coach's salary and you do it out, and I was trying to look at the numbers from years past and how it would work, we would be in the hole every year even using revolving for the, the coach's salary. Because certain coaches have been here many years, which is good because they're, you know, invested in the community and with the kids. But even with the increase, we increased, you know, this year, the user fee and we increased the, you know, money for tickets to get into the basketball games, things like that. That's going to help offset some of that cost. But even looking at that, the revolving basically covers the coaches' salaries and anything that comes in.
So even though that's in this line here, it's covered by athletic revolving?
Yeah, that, because that number there is just what they kind of estimated we were going to bring in for the revolving account. So that's not an actual line item that we take money out of. That's just a number that they estimated would be in the revolving account. Now this year, for instance...
So we would need to know what, what needs, because there's the local appropriation that the town approved. We need to know what that money is going to be.
Right, so if you look at, if you look the athletic detail, you'll see that the FY17 all funds number is $59,000 and change, being offset by $54,500 in athletic revolving leads around $4,000 and change.
Forty-eight fifty-five.
Forty-eight fifty-five, thanks, Arch. That's why you're sitting right here. Leaves forty-eight fifty-five. That would still be charged on the local side, but the rest of it will come out of revolving.
Just so it's clear on what...
Yeah, right.
Because I think that was a question you had sometime.
Right, because, take me over last year, I've been athletic director just over a year. So kind of going through with Mr. Cavallo and really seeing where money's being spent and how the athletic programs kind of run. Like I said, the biggest thing was transportation definitely needed to be increased just because of what was there and how many teams we've had. Obviously, this year with the middle school, we didn't have middle school girls or boy soccer, but I guarantee that we'll be back next year because the kids that we have moving up, you know, kind of comes in waves. This year, not as many kids played a fall sport as years past. But next year, we have a core group that I know are already talking about playing in that. So I'm hoping that we'll have the three teams on either side. What's that?
And that, that budget number for transportation is the number that's in the contract with first student that we went out to bid on, so.
Last year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm almost afraid to show this last slide, but I will. I could put the timer on and I could do like I used to do with my graduate students. You get five minutes, you get two. If I stand up, you're done, but...
Well, to be honest with you, I don't have a lot of questions. I'm kind of percolating with all of this. There's a lot of information.
And you will see another iteration of the budget in advance of the meeting. So just look for something and I'll send you an email that I'll drop with a different date stamp on the back end of the file so that you'll know that it's an updated version.
And I'm assuming as we move through the process, each time we'll get more detail and working towards, you know, what we were talking about before, expectations as far as, you know, what's, what would this all look like? Because I worked away with a magic wand and, you know, everybody got what they wanted. I think that's important.
Yep, no, absolutely. The narrative and how it fits with, how this fits with the strategic plan. We've had those conversations. So certainly, you know, to help you, to help build that narrative with you, certainly we can do that.
Quick question. When will, this is our first pass at it. When will we be ready to invite the finance committee and the select board as we told them to show them that first version? What is our starting point and when is it going to happen?
I believe that date is, so it is the second people meeting, if I remember right.
I, I suspect that the finance committee and the select board, did you say?
Yeah, we told them.
Would be very interested in the narrative and not the guts. Right, so they're going to want to know what we're asking, you know, what's going to look different. I don't really think they're going to care too much about any of, any of the broad data.
Are you going to pay for it, they're going to ask you?
Yeah, exactly. But we, we're also trying to demonstrate how this is all going to improve the district. So we need to know specifics.
I agree with that. I assume that finance committee folks will, will love to see some numbers, whatever those numbers could be. So is it the second week of April?
I believe it's the second meeting and I was going to give you an updated...
Second meeting, okay.
...meeting schedule, but I didn't get a chance to get that finished for a lot of reasons. So, but I'll, I'll get a memo out to you and to them in terms of inviting them to a meeting. I believe it's the second meeting in April that we had designated.
So I'll throw my, my personal thought and, you know, obviously, we have five different thoughts. I would think that if we have the opportunity to invite the finance committee for some informal conversation before that second meeting in April, which is actually pretty close to our most final version because we're going to have several durations, it would, it would align with the conversations that we had this year and last year, which was based on, this is what we know, this is what we have, we don't have the details, we don't have the narratives. I completely agree that there should be some narrative eventually. But to start that collaboration early on, I think it's a, it's a good, good habit for us to settle into. And I think we started doing that. It seems to me that second week, second meeting in April, which is probably after mid-month, might feel a little too late for us to really start engaging in this, I suppose.
Yeah, I think we're a little too early at this moment in time because we're just starting to put this thing together and get the numbers, you know. I would like to at least see what House Two looks like from the state. Because I would like to see, again, there's some rumblings that chair for Sunday may be increased as it moves legislative. I'd just like to see what another iteration of the state budget looks like too before we, you know, get into a real formal process with the other two committees. So I'm hopeful the House, I think is supposed to start taking it up within the next... So I'm hopeful the House, I think is supposed to start taking it up within the next week or so, which means we'll probably see something mid to end of March.
So, so that's the reality part. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to tweak things to remain within our means, whatever money comes our way and whatever other sources of revenue we have, we'll put them all together and that's what shapes our final decision, right? But I, I think the beauty of this zero-based budget process is that we don't really have to, or we should not, at least in early passes, wait for whatever the House has or whatever the improved budget is. What do we think is gonna be the cost of offering the services that we think will help our district and will align with the strategic plan? If we start with that, at the end of the day, if, you know, things change and circumstances unknown, we have to find ways to cut different sections of it, that's fine, that's, you know, that's what we do every year. But I'm personally curious, because of this zero-based approach that we have, to know how, where we are, what, without any outside factor, where we think we're, we're gonna be, and how a budget that aligns with our strategic plan will look. I, I would like to, I would be curious to see that. So if it's, you know, I, I'm just making this up, but if it's, if it's a million dollars over what, you know, what we had. Well, it's a million dollars on an LEA part, if, when we do all funds, only three hundred thousand dollars or so, right?
It's even less than that.
It maybe, it will be less than that potentially.
Yeah, sure.
So, but still, it's two hundred thousand dollars more than last year. And when we talk about narratives, that's what I'm, I'm really interested in, just how is that narrative aligning with the objectives that were set for ourselves just a few months ago, without really being influenced by whatever outside factors are coming our way? We know that they're coming, but, you know, it would be a good, good way for us to at least see where ideally we would like to be.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you, thank you all, this was.
Could we have a copy of the PowerPoint? It would help me when I'm looking back to remember.
Sure, I'll drop that in there.
What was said. Thank you.
Thank all those people, because.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, it's fun. The chairman was really excited. Yeah, they, no, they weren't, they're not happy with me, but that's, that's okay, that's, these are the things that happen.
I learned a lot, though, through this process, right? It's a nice way to spend it. Probably at a level of detail you don't.
So we are.
So we're done with reports and recommendations of the superintendent.
So back to new business. The second item is formative assessment of the interim superintendent of schools.
All righty.
That's this binder and this binder and this back here.
As is required under the open meeting law, this has to be done in open session, so you have the self-assessment that I have completed.
Yep.
A bunch of evidence, and here's the evidence.
Is this the same thing for each one of us?
Yes.
You're special, you're gonna get the.
You get the special.
I need a lot of evidence.
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know how you wanna do this.
So let me ask you the same question, how would you like to do it? Honestly, I think from our perspective, we can all go around and you already shared this in advance with us, if we, everybody has some opinion, thoughts, feedback that they would like to share in each one of these goals, we can do it that way, that may expedite the process, but I don't wanna speak for everybody. If there is another way that is suggested, we can do it that way also.
However you would like to go.
Okay, would it be okay if we just went around and spoke to what we have for each one of these goals? Is everyone feeling prepared for that, or?
Not really.
Okay. So let me then suggest this.
Okay.
Would it be possible for you to give us a very quick summary of which one of those goals or what you have, and then?
Oh, well, is that what you mean?
Yes, that's what I.
I mean, I, I reviewed everything.
But also, we have to give our assessment or?
Right, in other words, basically, what you're gonna be doing tonight is saying whether I'm on target to meet my goals, I'm off target and I need to do something else, or not anywhere close, was probably the, I guess, supposed to be the three, three, oh, three options, not met, I'm not sure what not met means other than you're kinda far away from where you need to be. So I have four goals coming into this process, the first being progress towards student learning goals, and I have submitted some evidence, one is a copy of a PowerPoint presentation that I did with regard to unwrapping the standards and trying to make sense of the curriculum standards, so you could see that. I tried not to inundate you with evidence, because I did see an old binder in the office that was three times as thick as this. The second piece of evidence is the evaluation of the November second Professional Development Day, which you've already seen anyway, but, you know, just officially submitting that as a piece of evidence, and the feedback that I got from it, which I share in my narrative around that. The third was having to do with setting up a data warehouse, and we have entered into a contract with a company by the name of BKL School Vision through Title I, since this is not a local appropriation, this is a grant-funded appropriation, where they actually take data from a variety of sources, so they'll take MCAS data, reading assessments, math assessments, they will dump them into a piece of software that allows easy access for principals, teachers, myself, to be able to look at trends overall and drill down to individual students so that good decisions about how to intervene with students who are struggling, we can do that. I've got some that says part of an amendment I'm gonna write to Title I to be able to maybe increase that. We are putting it in at third grade to increase the implementation and add it to fourth grade as well, so that's the start of that particular process. And that's pretty much it. So those are the things that I have done to this point.
That's it?
For that student learning goal. Want me to keep going? Okay, professional practice, um.
Oh, then, I mean, on that one. Do, do you wanna go through each one of these, or?
Or do you wanna stop and say, making progress, I'm not making progress, whatever.
Let's just do that.
Okay, so on goal one, I agree with you that you're on target, so.
We, we didn't have to do that one yet, though, right? We just did.
Well, this is the student learning goal.
Which is true, okay.
Yep, I just walked you through the student learning goal, okay?
Oh, okay, I was just starting from the beginning.
There's a little checkbox on the top of the form that says progress towards student learning goal, that's the one you wanna be looking at. It was a top seven paper.
So I'll finish to you as well, but I will just quickly go through what I, what I wrote. So the professional development you mentioned, and I'm glad that it's still a focus for us, looks like the feedback you have received, for the most part, there are some very good productive feedback in there as well, but it seems to have received a lot of favorable comments from those who attended. So I looked at it a little differently as well, I don't know how we always do these things, and, you know, obviously, everybody else has a lot more visibility into that, but I was also pleased by the fact that everybody felt comfortable enough to just provide that feedback and that opportunity was given to everyone to provide that feedback. I think that's, that, that allows us to shape these PD opportunities going forward. Not being an educator qualifying it that way, but someone who is trying to read and learn as much, I'm wondering whether or not we have as a district an opportunity to look at differentiated professional learning as well. This is something that I'm, you know, I just started reading about. And what I mean by that, this is great, especially, you know, the unwrapping standards, understanding what else we can do, how creative we can get, but when we provide one, uh, prof, uh, professional development opportunity, does that meet everyone's expectations and goals? Do we know whether that's the case? And based on the feedback that we receive, do we have an opportunity to differentiate and everybody can actually do different things based on their needs and interests? I don't have an answer for that.
Well, you're calling up on March first with this, right?
Yes, and.
That's coming right up, so that's the second portion of it.
And it's differentiated, it's based on?
Well, it's, it, it's not like I'm standing up and lecturing for a whole day, because that would make my own eyes roll in back of my head, never mind anybody else's. So I think what, you know, this is more of a job embedded kind of professional development. In other words, we need to get curriculum documents written. So one of the things we're really focusing on, particularly with the elementary and secondary teachers, is now that the new science framework has been adopted by the state, we have a new generation of tests coming next year, you need to get a curriculum in place and begin to get it implemented, so that's a huge thing. So that particular group of people is really gonna be working on trying to make sense of the standards, having those conversations and then rewriting them for our own curriculum document in a way that says, we agree this is what this standard asks kids to know and to be able to do. So that work leads them to the creation of that document, where English Language Arts and Math folks are really looking at, they've written curriculum documents, they are now saying, how do we, what standards out of all of these, you have to teach them all, but you teach them with different emphases. So which standards need to get more emphasis in the classroom than others? So in November, they articulated some sort of broad generalities, now we're trying to drill it down into the standards so that if I'm a second grade teacher and I'm hearing from other teachers that my kids need to learn math facts, where in that curriculum do I really need to hone in? What standard am I teaching? What things can I do to make sure that kids are becoming fact fluent? So that's the work that they're engaging in. Some of the other disciplines, their curriculum documents are very old, so again, we'll just kinda take in another look at them, another pass at them and saying, again, how do we look at this through the eyes of a child and make sure that the curriculum makes sense to a child who's going through the system? So it kinda depends on the work that they're doing, so it's more of a job embedded, it's like, I, you know, I do a little bit of work and then they're at it doing their own work, I'm doing more facilitating, and I am actually teaching something or having people teach something. So it's more of a job embedded instruction, yeah, job embedded approach, yeah.
And how is their data working with grade three only, is the only one you're using it with?
Um, yeah, they've just started to onboard that and starting to get people up and ready to use it, so we'll know better as we go through. We just got a second round of data from the DIBBLES reading data, the Benchmark Assessment System and some math assessments. So we now have a fall set and a winter set, so we're getting the winter set inputted, so that way that can get up and running, so the second half of the year, we'll be able to see more of it.
A lot of work on this, not very well.
Yeah. So, so based on the three criteria here, I, I think we're absolutely on target to meet this goal.
I didn't bring a paper copy, I did not bring a paper copy of the assessment form, but I think there's one in the, in the Dropbox, so I didn't know.
There was.
Yeah, so I don't know if you wanna complete one tonight for the committee, if you wanna do it electronically.
I, I don't have to. You guys wanna complete one? You mean printed?
It doesn't have to be printed, I mean, it just.
You can do it electronically.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I can, I can.
Okay. The second one I'm gonna look at is the progress towards professional practice. And some of the things that had to be done was the strategic plan, so the copy of the strategic plan is in place, demonstrating that that has been completed. Just an email, just letting you know that the Emergency Operations Plan Task Force is, is at work, a meeting again tomorrow night. We're getting very close to having something ready, so we're hoping that sometime in March we'll have a plan ready to go. And then, as you know, I've been convening a community partners group, and while that was not something that was in my original goal, it was something that sort of bubbled up as we were working together on social emotional learning, so again, there's an email to that group showing that it has been established. We've had two meetings and we're gonna have another meeting next week to continue the conversation about some things. We've got some really good people at the table, other agencies who have some resources and some programming that could be definitely helpful for kids K through twelve, and as a matter of fact, the next meeting, I'm gonna invite Chris Taggart from the collaborative to come as well, just so that, you know, we can make sure that we're not stepping on each other's toes, but we've got complementary things going on for students, so that's part of that. And then the million minutes of reading was just another way to engage the community in the life of the school, and so there's a blog post about to kick off of that. Coffee and conversation has not gone as well as I had hoped. I had one, two people, I even went to parent-teacher conferences figuring if I showed up in the building, you know, they might come, but, you know, not, not that many. Jim was a trooper and stayed with me with one parent one night, so.
Then I left at the right time, I think.
Yeah.
That one?
So, but, you know.
Well, next time try chili and conversation.
There you go, I guess, maybe that's it, so.
Does anybody have to say anything on this one?
Oh, she's right on target. There's a lot of work right there, there's a lot of work that is certainly well documented and well received, even though there aren't many people there, but you're, you're trying and that's the challenge.
So I, I agree that you're on target, but especially on this one, I just wanted to say a few more things.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I've really enjoyed whatever you have been doing so far, especially on this one, and I'll give you examples. I was very pleased that we were able to, you led the process, but we're able to gather members of the community from every walk of life, every interest in the school system, and walk them through a process that is not even easy sometimes to do in a business setting. We walked through an entire strategic plan building process, and I think it was done very successfully, very nicely. Everyone felt engaged, and I, I don't even know if any one of those folks previously had done anything like that, but it felt almost natural, the conversations. So that, that was a big starting point, at least from my perspective, for all of us. Same thing on the emergency plan that you're putting together. The interesting thing on that one was that same folks that I thought would be probably all tired and then would never show up at our schools after the strategic plan, some of the same folks were on the same, on the committee for emergency plans. So that tells me that they actually enjoyed something and they wanted to come back and do a little more, which is, from my perspective, what a great way of engaging those folks and making them part of things that we are putting together. The, we always talk about communication and, you know, being visible and all that. When your blog entries fall on my phone, I immediately just, either on my iPad or on my phone, I just go there and check it because I know that it's not gonna be just some fluff, but I'm, even though we're having these meetings, there will be something for me to see from a different angle, different perspective. And regardless of the success of some of the things that you mentioned like coffee and conversations, the intent was there, and I think you successfully laid the groundwork for something that hopefully we can continue to do, which is, folks, it's not everybody, and we have a lot of work to broaden that to everybody. But I hear from a lot of folks that they feel very comfortable reaching out, coming to meetings, talking to, to everyone in this, in the school, especially you. So, so kudos to you for being able to do that in such a short period of time. So this one, I particularly felt strongly that not only we are on target, but I was personally very pleased with everything that happened so far. Thank you for that. Thank you for that.
I would, um, ditto that. And the two things that stuck out for me were, um, the select board and the finance committee meetings and, um, just building relationships. I don't, I know we could not have begun that without you specifically. So, um, and, you know, the time was, the, the time was right and you were the right person at the right time, so... And the other thing, uh, too, was I don't think anybody can accuse you of not communicating.
Ask Archie how many text messages he got from me yesterday. No!
Make good morning.
Phone calls, tags, hi!
And it's coming in all different forms.
Right.
So, I don't think anybody, and, and that's one thing that's, I've gotten a lot of feedback on, is, um, the improvement in communication.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I agree, it's disappointing, especially when you put so much effort into the coffee and conversation and, you know, not to have that, you know, attended is, is disappointing. But at least we know the communication is, is going out there.
And she's never given up on them either.
No.
Which is nice, you know?
Standing in light.
And the difference that I've heard from people in town is that they feel welcome. And that is not what we were hearing a little over a year ago in the past. So, to me, that has also been really heartening to know that people, again, in the community are feeling like they can come here again and that it's, that it's their school and that's all because of you.
Well, it's the community's school, it's what it's all about.
We've brought us back together, though. You know, it was fragmented. It was really fragmented. Yes, we're not perfect, we have a long way to go, we have a lot of work ahead of us, but I, I know, I, I just feel like the ship has been steered in the right direction again and...
Aren't you glad that's what you're being handed off?
You know, that was our vision, too. That was our vision, right? In hiring an interim was righting the ship for the next, um, permanent superintendent. I just can't thank you enough for...
So, one last thing that I actually have here that I forgot to mention, and this is based on what, not only what I observed, but, uh, what, what I heard. Um, we, we just mentioned these folks, so the finance committee and the select board, especially the finance committee. Uh, I, I think we, we successfully connected with the finance committee, but beyond that, I think they do realize that conversations are very honest, transparent, sincere and just they, they get whatever they need to get. And I heard this, uh, from them personally as well. So, hopefully it'll come to our next meeting and say, well, I wouldn't say anything like that. But I heard from them that it is, it is an easy conversation to have because we are basically putting everything on the table and trying to explain what is and what is not, as opposed to trying to, uh, you know, tell some stories around, around numbers. So, so that's one thing I did not want to forget that.
Well, and it's my personal philosophy that, you know, this is the public's money. And we have a fiduciary responsibility to be fully transparent. Why wouldn't you?
Well, I know why you wouldn't, if there's something going on and you want them to see. But that's not the case here, so, yes, it, it works well. That philosophy works really well.
But, I mean, the good, the bad and the ugly. I mean, you need to be fully transparent.
Agreed.
Cool. You may have two more goals, I don't know.
Yes, I do. Um, the district improvement goal, number one, was around, um, both policy work and budget work. So, again, I didn't produce a policy manual for you because I figured you got it in Google Drive anyway and whatever else. Obviously, the A section is done. We then decided to move to more of the instructional and student ones because those are the pithier ones to get done. Um, section I comes for a vote tonight. Section J, we're, um, fast and furious, um, working on.
As fast and furious as that can possibly be.
Yes. And, uh, whether or not I will get to all the way through the policy manual by May thirty first, I don't know, but I will get to as far as I can get. And then I'll hand it off. Oh, just carry on. I could go back through this. And then, obviously, you've just seen the first iteration of the budget, so...
That is not a thumbs up.
No, but, I mean, that's, it's not, it was sincere.
Although we're fine.
Yeah.
But, you know, we, we appreciate it. Really? We appreciate that.
See, I gotta tell you, I, I, it is tedious and with everything else, it is a lot of stuff to go through. But I'm enjoying it because by reviewing all that, I, I see, I, I see what is there and what is not.
No, I am too.
You know, the school committee's primary role is, you know, to set policy. All those things belong to this body. And it's an opportunity for me that other, otherwise I would not have taken. You know, who would just go home and say, you know, I'm going to read some school, uh, some of the policy tonight?
You've got a million minutes of reading right here, we're done! Wake me up on the roof, I'm good.
Yeah, way too much, yeah, way too much of it.
It is, so, so, so a few of my comments are related to those.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate your help in providing your insight and your experience, uh, taking our set and comparing it to what's available out there, making suggestions to eliminate, uh, certain, uh, policies that should not have been in, uh, our, uh, uh, set to begin with. Or you are providing the latest and greatest for us to incorporate or entirely insert in our, uh, policies. Uh, so, I, I mean, from my perspective, the top thing that I can say is that it was educational for me and I appreciate that you, I really learned quite a bit.
It is educational. You are not done, don't put that in the past tense. I learned that.
I just can't figure out when you have the time to do everything you do just policy alone, forget...
Sleep is overrated.
Right, so...
She has a little gremlin.
So, so I, I feel the same way. I, I come to the subcommittee meetings and I know I do my reading before we get here and I think, e- every time we get here, you're so far ahead of me that I just, like, I'm in awe and really truly appreciate the help that you're giving us.
We'll have it all ready for you.
So, that one's good.
Yes, that one's good.
Okay.
Yes.
Last but not least is the capital plan, um, which, uh, we are awaiting word from the capital planning committee, which won't happen until after the March first vote on the school. Um, however, we did have, um, a meeting, so I think it will behoove us in a, in, uh, as we begin to look at the capital plan with the capital planning committee. We did have a meeting with the energy committee, um, the other night, um, which Marie chairs, and began talking about some of the things that are on the capital plan in that context. There was an open period for an accelerated roof repair statement of interest with the MSBA that because we've been put on hold with the capital planning committee, we missed the window for this year.
You're kidding?
So, because all of this one up on, on hold.
I was calling on that.
But, but I have to say this. The, uh, energy consultant from the DOER, um, Jim Berry, also said that there are energy funds for insulation of said roof. So, it would almost behoove us to think about maybe putting the boilers up front and putting the roof on year two. We could, I mean, you could get through a year with some patching on this roof and take advantage of DOER funds for extra insulation up there and getting your ducks in a row for doing a statement of interest for an accelerated roof repair in another year. And potentially get more insulation for no cost, literally, because DOER will pay for it. And then also getting the MSBA to contribute to the roof.
What does that require of the district?
Um, you would have to have a meeting with, um, the select board. You would also have to have a meeting authorizing the superintendent, um, to submit the statement of interest. Notice how I just...
For the insulation, please?
No, for the, for the accelerated roof repair.
Yeah.
That actually goes through the, through my energy committee.
Uh-huh.
Um, and we apply for the funds because we're a, a mass green community.
Yeah.
So, we have, in Granby, because we're a, a green community, we have the ability to get money from DOER for anything that's energy related. So, while they can't pay for a roof, they can pay for extra insulation. They can also, but the boilers can be paid for.
So, would that just be, um, a request made to your group? I mean, how, is that...
We're, we're already working on it.
Yeah, yeah. So, might behoove you, again, to think about flipping those two projects because to make, again, for the town to say, we're going to try and take advantage of DOER funds for extra insulation on the roof and at the same time get MSBA reimbursement for the whole roof ventilation project anyway, then at least you can say to the town, you know, we're also, by swapping out the, the behemoth boilers that live here and, you know, Marie saw them, they're huge, um, you know, with, you know, something that's, could give you, these are, the energy, uh, uh, TMS's, uh, maintenance consultant said they're probably running at about sixty-two to sixty-four percent efficiency right now. Put in decent boilers, we could be at eighty percent efficiency.
And that payback and savings in energy could help pay for part of the roof, so, yeah.
How long does this take?
It, it's an ongoing process, you know?
So, I mean, first of all, it's to think about maybe shifting some of these priorities with the capital planning committee and say, let's do the boilers first. Let's hold off on the roof so we can get all of the planets to align and do that second, you know? And just patch what needs to be patched to get, get you through a year. I mean, you could get through here, just repairing what needs to be repaired here.
And when does the program open up again for the roof?
It will open up again in January of next year. And then there's like a six-week window, um, to do all of that. But it will give Cheryl and you some time to think through, how are we going to get all of these funding sources to come together in a way that makes sense for the roof project? So, you might not be looking at a million dollars. You might be looking at six hundred thousand or five hundred thousand, or who knows? You know, depending on what they've got for available funds, plus getting added insulation at no cost, you know? Behooves putting on the brakes and, and doing it in that kind of way.
That's how we sell it.
Right. And, and so now, the next, the next step in the process is really an energy audit for the oil division to make sure that, that the, the state sees that as our next step as well.
Are we talking weeks, months?
I don't know yet. We're waiting for answers from the state.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
No, the, this, this department moves pretty quickly.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. They're an arm, they're an arm of the DEP, so...
Because I make, because I make, I make calls about it every two days, so, you know?
But, um, you know, so again, in terms of the capital plan, um, you know, we're just gonna wait to hear from the capital planning committee and they're not going to do anything until after the vote anyway, which could impact some of the projects that are around here anyway. So, we may need to sort of re-tweak this. So, I think, again, looking at this as sort of a, a work in progress.
So, going back to, uh, the assessment, um, I think we are on target. I think everybody agrees. Uh, one quick question, uh, on that. With the water-related issues, will those be, uh, if we can isolate this, uh, the source of the problem, would those become part of this capital plan? And, uh, and then probably the prioritization will be, uh, will go further because we're going to have to prioritize those and then...
It would depend on whether or not it hits the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. Because that's, that's the floor, um, in which you come in on, so, you know?
It hopefully doesn't.
All remain to be seen as we work through that process.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so, any other questions? Anything else that anyone wanted to add? So, thank you very much. I think we're on target with all, uh, of your four goals.
Okay.
Uh, and we're looking forward to continuing our meetings.
All right, thank you.
You know, I have a feeling that CEOs don't have to go through this evaluation process.
This is a result of, um, litigation. It happens because a school committee in Wayland, um, violated the open meeting law by deliberating via email over the superintendent's evaluation. So, this was ruled, uh, by the SJC that it must happen in open session and the open meeting law has been amended.
I mean, the whole, the whole evaluation was...
Oh, that's, this is what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requires, so...
Okay. But I think it's a healthy process to, sometimes probably conversation is not as comfortable as we had tonight, but, you know, that's...
No, I don't even mean that. I mean, I, I mean, I can just imagine the hours that you spent pulling this all together and...
Sleep is overrated.
Not in my world. I like my sleep.
So, our next item is, uh, um, a review of policy JKAA, which is related to physical restraint of students. And tonight, we will have our first reading of the policy. Did you want to, uh, give some background on this one, Judy?
Um, basically, the policy is, um, designed to, uh, speak to new regulations around restraint of students and, uh, suppression. So, it, it, you know, was just realigned to, to be compliant with the new law.
So, as I mentioned, this will be our first reading and next time it comes, uh, to our committee, which will be probably our next meeting,
Yeah.
uh, we're going to approve it. This is, as Judy said, this is aligning us with the law and it's been missing, so...
The two pages want to be stronger, right?
Yeah.
That's one part, yeah, okay. That's why I wrote happy board.
Yeah. Any questions on this one? Okay. So, all business? Uh, this is related to, again, our policies, our policy manual, uh, section I. Uh, we had our first reading earlier. So, this is for us to have our second reading and then vote to approve if everybody agrees, uh, or would like to amend any section that you read. Any questions on any section of, uh, on section I?
There's one, is this, is this the one I have, I looked through, I think there's a part of that, is this about health education is in this one, right?
Mm-hmm.
Did you make any changes in that? Did I?
No changes in...
Well, I know, it's, it's talked about, it's taught as a separate, it's integrated in elementary school.
Mm-hmm.
So, we know that that's happening.
Yeah.
And it's taught as a separate subject in the middle school and high school.
That's correct.
Presently happening.
Yeah, it's part of what the phys ed teachers do. They do some classes, physical education wise, and then do some wellness classes in the classroom, yes.
And we, we have the health curriculum?
Yes.
That's printed somewhere, someplace that they are?
Yes.
Elementary, too?
Yes. I think that as that whole group goes through a revision of their curriculum, uh, work, they're going to find ways to be more integrated, particularly at the elementary level in terms of healthy lifestyles and the physical education activities that they offer in the classrooms. They're looking to try and align those standards a little bit better than they have been in the past.
Yeah, I'll just bring it up again, because I brought it earlier, that there's just no way they can do all that when they, when they have one P class that is a elementary class. It's just, it's just physically impossible.
Well, it, it's bringing into, into their activities. It's a sort of a different mindset in terms of, you know, if you're going to do, um, you know, a unit on, I don't know, you know, basketball unit, you're talking, you know, you bring in cardiovascular health and, and all of that kind of stuff into that whole mix. And then that can spur conversations about not only exercise, but healthy eating and whatever else. It's how they choose to sort of frame the activities that they already do. And Kyle's, Kyle and I have had some conversations about that in terms of how he's trying to, you know, work with kids on heart rate and, you know, do some very rudimentary things, you know, with the little ones. And as they get older and older, they can go a little bit deeper. Hi, remember when we did this last year? Well, this year, we're going to do a little extra around that, so, uh, it's just getting that a little better articulated.
Yeah, I think you'd love to have more time to do it, too.
Right. Oh, absolutely.
Bring that up, that we, we can't forget some of those things that we took out before that maybe need to go back.
I think, uh, another conversation that we had in the context of health education is that we, uh, we still seem to have some opportunities to, uh, to incorporate sex education in some shape or form and, and the curriculum, and for the same reasons, probably, that we don't really have the resources. Uh, we don't provide even the most rudimentary, uh, education, uh, on that either.
Right.
So, probably we have... So probably we have some more, more conversations to have around this part of the policy.
Well, and our school nurses work with the phys ed staff to try and do some of that stuff with the kids as well, yeah. You know, for example, just in the area of wellness and working with students, you know, right now, the fire department is in with some of our wellness classes, doing a unit on CPR. And just before the Thanksgiving break, Chief Anderson broached me and with some real concerns about opioid use and how to work with students on that issue. And so he has devised a program with his EMTs. He didn't want to do it from a police sort of legal perspective. He wanted to do it more from a physiological perspective. So they actually, I was supposed to go this afternoon but wasn't able to. They actually did sort of a demonstration of what they would do in a 45-minute lesson with like eighth and ninth grade students because our survey data from that PNAS survey, you know, that has been shared before shows that by that.
The survey?
The health survey, you know, behaviors, risky behaviors, et cetera, that the results of that survey show that by 10th grade, kids are in a very different place around some of this stuff than they are in eighth grade. So we're trying to hit them more at that sort of eighth, ninth grade level. So they are going to, I want to say it's like March 2nd, 3rd, somewhere around in that neighborhood, they're actually going to do something for the parents so that the parents can see what they're going to do. And then the fire department's going to go into classrooms and do a program on opioid use and what its effects are on the human body. And, you know, think twice before you think about making a bad decision, kids, and trying to do that young enough, you know. And that was something that he just decided on his own that he wanted to offer to the school. So again, here's an opportunity to take a great community resource, take somebody who cares deeply about this issue because when he came to see me, there had been a couple of overdoses in Belchertown and one here in Granby that had been intervened with Narcan with. And he just said, we need to do something. And this is what I'd like to do. And he's grown up from a concept to a real program that he's worked with Karen Solzik-Wilch on delivery, so that there'll be something for parents in advance so that they can see what's going to be delivered to the students and then the students will get the program after that, so. Kudos to him for wanting to do that. Granby's loss will be Southwick's gain in that department. He's going to be the chief in Southwick.
I did not know that.
Yeah.
Wow.
He actually came from Southwick. He worked in that department for a long time.
Yeah, it's a kind of a family.
Yeah.
Wow.
But it's unfortunate because he's a fabulous, both the fire and the police chief are just great people to work with.
Oh, when's he leaving?
I believe the current chief is retiring in April, so. But he said to me, I sent him an email saying, you know, you know, would miss working with him. But he sent me back an email and said that he had a commitment to make sure that he got this program done before he goes, so.
Oh, good. Oh, that's sad.
Do we have any other questions on section I? So is there a vote to approve section I of our policy manual?
Motion.
Is there a second? Any other questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marie and Emery and Judy.
Judy especially.
Yes, goodness. So as I mentioned earlier, in terms of upcoming business, the emergency operations plan, I hope that by the end of March, we'll have a draft ready for you to look at and approve, so.
What time is that tomorrow night, Judy?
Uh, 6:30.
If I can make it finally.
Just move the time.
6:30.
Do we have an executive session?
Yes.
So we have, we went through all of our open session items. So we're going to vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Part A 3, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. Is doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. So can we have a roll call, please?
The MP withdraws the aye.
Jennifer Curran, aye. Maureen McCourt, aye.
Jim Peters, aye.
Anne Ramon, aye.